Ten o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting for County of Starr Tuesday, November 12th. Let the record show that we do have quorum, everyone being present. And I want to welcome and thank everyone for being here this morning. If everyone will please stand for the pleasure. Any further comments?
There's none.
Okay, first item on the agenda is the vendor's list. Ms. Alanis?
Yes.
Motion second, discussion. Honorable fairer, please aye. Opposed. Motion carries. I'm sorry? Oh, do we have many minutes? Okay, I have a motion second to approve minutes. Honorable fairer, please aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Next item is claims, Ms. Alanis. Motion second to approve, discussion. Honorable fairer, please aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Before we start with our reports, is there anyone that needs to come before the court at this time? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and follow with our agenda. Tax assessor.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. You should see my report in front of you. This is the beginning of the fiscal, October 1st, 2024 through October 31st. Just going to highlight a couple of them. Our records management collected 6,100 copies, was 143070. Our records archive collected 5,00906. Total due to the Treasury's office was 30,89820, back up to where we normally at between $30,000 and $32,000 a month. Any questions? Thank you.
Next is the Sheriff's Department.
Judge Commissioners, good morning. The report for November reads $393,429. We had federal inmates 193, Idalgo County inmates 27, Starr County inmates 74, for a total of 294. The monthly average for federal was 148, and for Idalgo County was 44.
Any questions on the sheriff's report? International Bridge.
Good morning. This is the report for October 2024. The total revenue from traffic is $270,979, and we show an increase of $46,723 for the month of October 2023 compared to the month of October 2024. And we also show an increase of $14,499.50. That's on collections for the month of October 2024 compared to the month of September 2024. We have the currency exchange excess at $71.76, and the grand total collections for the month of October is $271,050.76. Do you have any questions?
Sheriff's Report.
Yes, good morning, Judge and Commissioners. This is my report for the month of October. You just follow along with me. The ending balance for the general fund is at $1,247,015.82. The ending balance for the Road and Bridge, it's at $628,304.75. The enterprise funds, the ending balance is at $2,073,346.72. The Drainage District, the ending balance is at $4,1,054.82. The INS funds, that one is at $1,896.13.67, which brings the whole ending balance total of all funds to $9,836,824.78. That is my report.
Any questions on that report?
Thank you.
County auditor, Ms. Alanis.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. I have my report for the month of October 31st, 2024. Page one, I provide a cash summary for the general fund. Available balance for general fund, $871,359. Road and Bridge cash available, $328,366. Payroll clearing account, $811,508. I'll move on to page two. Budget summary for general fund. Total revenues year-to-date, $112,087. Moving on to page three are the expenditures for general fund. It continues on to page four with a year-to-date expenditures of $2,236,852, with a total deficit of $2,124,765. It's kind of early in the year, so we still have to work those numbers. Moving on to page five, Road and Bridge. Year-to-date revenues collected, $59,576. Expenditures year-to-date total, $856,725. Total deficit right now, $727,148. I'll move on to page six. We have the enterprise funds. International Bridge. The revenues are a little bit delayed. They're usually like a month behind, so we're not showing any revenues at the moment. So far, total expenditures, $898,776. Gas system, year-to-date revenues, $94,601. Expenditures year-to-date, $57,014, with a total surplus of $37,587. Transfer station, year-to-date revenues, $228,333. Total expenditures, $208,990, with a total surplus of $19,343. Special revenue, American Rescue Plan. We still have $3,503,713 in the ARPA. Moving on to page seven, we have the debt summary. Total debt outstanding, $9,418,13. And that concludes my report. Questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on with our agenda. Item eight. Well, I'll entertain a motion to table the tax assessor's report. Motion second, discussion. Honorable fairer, please aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item eight is an action item, and this is to approve the county-wide burn ban. It will expire. Motion second to approve, discussion. Honorable fairer, please aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item nine is an action item, and this is, I guess, to discuss and maybe approve the new tipping fees for the transfer station together.
Does everyone have the sheet provided? If not, I can... Yes, it looks like this. Okay. Your Honor and Commissioners, this is a proposed fee schedule of fees for the transfer station. We looked around in the surrounding vicinity's communities that, according to the rates that they had, and I kind of met halfway. There was, you know, we're charging a lot lower than everyone else. And as you can see, the current fees are in that column there. Do you need one, Commissioner Garza? Okay. And then the proposed fees are there on that schedule that I have. Yes. For example, everyone else is charging between 25 and 35, and we're charging just 15. We're going to be like a little less than them. Yeah, halfway to... Halfway to their high end. Yes, you're right.
I went up there and went in and non-resident, in Carlington. If you go in there, you got from one to a thousand pounds, it's $123. And from there on, it goes up again. But no matter how much you have, you see one pound to a thousand pounds, $123. And this advice here, you need to understand that this is going to cost you whatever. We don't have, we'll weigh you, but if it's under a thousand pounds, it's $123.
Yeah, trash is expensive to dispose of.
To dispose and our hauling, and you know...
There's so many requirements imposed by TCEQ, not only on us, but on the landfills.
Yes. And I discussed it, Letty? I discussed it with our auditor, and she's recommending that we go try it for this year and see how our revenues come in.
The only one that I have a issue with is the, on the tire disposal.
Okay.
The passenger tires, you know, if we go up to three dollars as it is, you know, we get a lot of them disposed on county roads and stuff. You know, maybe we could keep that at $2.
That's fine. That's fine. Yeah, well, we could keep it the same, Judge. I just want it, since we had, you know, increased the actual fees.
Yeah, that's the only one. The other side I don't have a problem with is just the tires, you know, and again, because if someone goes and throws it on the side of the road, now we're still going to have to pick them up. It costs the Commissioners the labor and then we still have to dispose.
So I'll go with your all's recommendation, of course.
You know, it's a pandemic on the tire. We pick up over 2,000 tires a week. And I just saw the city of Rourande is hauling tires out of, I take up to the valley. I saw a truck load from the city of tires going towards the valley. I mean, it's just horrible, what this tire deal is going on.
It is, it is, and it's improved, you know, since we got the tire cutters, you know, it's...
It has, it has.
But it's still a problem as far as people disposing them on the side of the road.
So what would...
Are you looking at tipping fees for the 0 to 500 pounds and 0 to 500 to 1,000?
Uh huh.
You're recommending a $10 increase.
Mm-hmm. That's per 500 pounds.
The thing is, we're still going to haul this up to Edinburgh, am I correct? You have this?
Yes.
I'm seeing multiple, we're not making the numbers, you're always coming in the red. Do you think that with this $10 increase, will you come in the black? Or are you still going to come in the red with the hauling? I'm talking about the hauling now.
Yeah, I understand you, absolutely. Well, it's like, Ms. Alanis. Come over here, Ms. Alanis.
We're going to probably get some heat on it, but we've got to understand our price of cost to haul all our trash up to Edinburgh. You're talking about, we're losing from 25 to 30,000 each month.
Yes.
So is this going to increment, is this going to put us at equal? Or are still we going to be in the red if we're going to with the charges?
I think it might put us at equal, because it just depends, the other cost might come in. It's hard to tell at the moment.
I mean, if we're going to increment, and we're still going to be in the red, we'll just increment.
Yeah.
But if we're going to increment and come at least equal or up to par, if not, let's go ahead and add.
Well, that's why she, that's why she's recommending that we try it for six months or...
A month or two months?
I would say maybe a couple, like maybe six months.
Six months.
Get a big picture of it?
Yes. And then we can bring it back to the table.
Because we don't want to lose any more money on the transfer stations. We're the only ones that are losing money.
It has to be treated as a business. We cannot subsidize the business.
How much does it cost to haul the trash up there? Fifty-something?
It's about $120,000 per month.
No, no, I'm talking, how much are they charging per ton to haul it?
Per what? I'm sorry. Per ton, I don't remember. I don't remember, I would need to bring back...
Well, we just had a, when we did it out, they gave us a proposal, something like 48 or 51, something like that.
Yeah, but on top of that, they charge, on top of that, they charge fuel and they charge all this extra...
Take a look at this here. At the very bottom, they're going to $55 a ton. Almost, they gone from 1,500 to 2,000. It's $55, okay? At a time. If it's 55, you barely cover the cost of what's costing us to haul it up there. But if it's more than that...
Yeah, but Commissioner, the reason that I brought this proposed fee is because we don't want to up it drastically right now.
I don't want to come out equal. I don't want to lose any more money, that's the only thing I'm asking. So if you guys feel that with this proposal, we can come out equal and not lose money, I'm in. But if we're going to still keep on losing money, but let's increment it right now, another $5, I don't know, but you know the numbers.
I guess maybe like in three months, I can bring in like an analysis, like maybe compare this year from last year.
What we don't want is to lose any more money on the freight cost that we're, that's what's making our our transfer station lose money, and it's the freight, and we all know it.
Motion to approve, yeah?
Would your motion be motion to approve excluding not the tire, freight to remain the same? Okay.
That's only the passenger tires, not the truck tires or semi.
Judge, would that be just passenger or all of them, not...
I would say just the passenger.
The rest we can increase?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, you know, it raises another concern, Judge, that it's going to motivate people not to throw the trash on the roadways. But let's try it.
Yeah, well...
People are still going to throw trash, they're not going to stop on it. There's people that do abide, and actually be clean, and there's people that don't care.
This is where we need the constables to help. You know, the constables need to go out there and enforce the law. And then, of course, our JPs to also find these people where it becomes more expensive to throw it on the side of the road than it does to take it to the landfill. You know, we need their help.
That's correct. The constable go find, find the market for the trash, go to the JP, and they don't do anything about it. I know for a fact.
Yeah, that's a problem.
The passenger tires for commercial business, were those remaining at $2?
Yes.
Yes. The only one that is going to remain is the $2.
Seventeen inches less. And actually, passenger tires go all the way to 22, 24, but those are the ones we're talking about.
Yeah, I think that 17 should be, like Commissioner says, maybe 22.
Okay.
Instead of, because now they're bigger. Just any passenger tire.
Okay.
I had a motion, did I? Second. Any further discussion? Honorable fairer, please aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Item 10 is an action item, is the renaming of Naciso Road and Lockenberry Center and Naciso, Naxo Road. The Naciso Road, Commissioner? Okay, so it's one street that the name is going to change to Naciso. Nacario, I'm sorry. Okay, so that's a motion, is there a second to that?
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Honorable fairer, please aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item 11 is an action item, is to approve a bid for a 24 Mercedes-Benz Sprinter, and this is, I believe, for the elderly program.
That's correct, Your Honor. Ms. Guerra's got all the information on this issue. Bits were open last week.
Yes. Your Honor and Commissioners, two bids were received on Thursday, the 7th. And we got one bid from the actual Mercedes, and that was for $72,172. And then we got another one from Payne. And the reason I opened it was because the outside of the envelope was labeled that that was what they were bidding on, a Mercedes-Benz. And I'm like, okay, but Payne doesn't sell, but you never know. So when I opened it, it wasn't what was requested in the paper. It was for a Ram Promaster, and that bid came in for $87,120.
In the 2023?
Yes.
Yeah, 2023, not 2024.
So it was higher anyway?
It was higher anyway, but I, you know, automatically it's rejected because it's not put...
Yeah, disqualified. Can I make a motion to approve based on Ms. Guerra's approval of the Mercedes 2024 Sprinter?
Motion second, discussion. Honorable fairer, please aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item 12 is an action item, and this is to approve, because the next three items are subdivisions. First one is Norias Phase 6, Santa Domingo.
Good morning.
Good morning.
La Norias wasn't ready, so we want to table it for next Commissioners' Court.
Moved in second to table. Honorable fairer, please aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Next item is a preliminary approval for Bombilias subdivision.
Yes, Las Bombilias subdivision is in Precinct 1, and we're asking for preliminary.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable fairer, please aye. Opposed. Motion carries, and this is preliminary, correct?
Yes.
Next item is also preliminary, and this is Las Margaritas.
Yes, Las Margaritas subdivision is in Precinct 3, and we're asking for preliminary.
Moved in second to approve, the preliminary discussion. Honorable fairer, please aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next several items are permitting for fiber optic, and I believe they're all from the same company. Ms. Garcia?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. These titles were submitted by the Houseley Group, who have been doing a lot of work here in Starr County for the fiber optics, and they're identified from item number 15 all the way up to number 21, and it's various parts of the county where they're doing all this different optics. So we recommend approval.
Before we do, these are all, most of, all of them might precinct, for the exception, I don't know, I don't know what it is here, one is Citya La Ruya. It doesn't pretend to be some street there.
The Citya La Ruya doesn't have a planning department, Commissioners, so we take care, we handle their permits.
Let me tell you something. To first start off, the gentleman here representing...
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. We got, I have gotten some complaints in that area about your companies working out there. They tore up some lines, which it doesn't bother me, lines, the water lines, I don't care. But their roads were not cleaned up after all the mess, the water ran dirt and gravel and everything. The people were complaining that they were not fixing up what they were tearing down there. So I think you guys need to take a look at that, because people are complaining. The other one, Mr. Ruffo, are you, you're in charge of this permit?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I see all these permits here, but I see a bunch of streets on the same permit, okay? If I recall just last time, that we stated that we were going to charge $600 for each road they cross.
Well, I believe it was not for each road, it was for each construction...
For each application.
Yeah, that's what it was.
And it was 650, Mr.?
That's what I understood when we were there in the ticket session.
No, no, it's, it's for each project that they have, I think, and that's what the valley does.
Yeah, that was for each submittal and the application. The recommendation fee was 650, and I think that's what was approved.
Who was, where, what was the proof by?
On the last meeting that we had.
The last meeting that we had.
Did we approve it or we discussed it?
No, we approved.
So it's not for each crossing then?
It was for, per, per application, yeah. For example, here they have four, six, five, six applications.
They have seven applications.
So each one would be 600 some dollars.
And 650. And the reason was, Commissioner, is there are some streets here that intersect with the City of Rourande, and we, and they would, the applications have to do with what the county jurisdiction is. So anything having to do with Rourande that doesn't apply here.
I know, I understand, I'm not worried about Rourande. I'm talking about this year. Is that what we discussed? That's what I, I didn't understand that, but that's what you guys say it is. That's fine with me. But we need to, you sir, to make sure those people, after they get done with whatever, do clean up and leave it as it was.
Yes, sir.
So what's the feature? I think the $500 that Commissioner Garcia was talking about is... $500 that we're talking about was a discussion that had to do with crossing county roads.
That's what I understood last time, you know.
Yeah, I do recall it was 650 for each application provided.
Yes, sir. That was what was presented and recommended.
Right.
Yes.
So it's not 15 to 21?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second, discussion.
Thank you, guys.
Honorable fairer, please aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item 22 is an action item, and this is to ratify a purchase order for Five Star Park Construction. I believe this one had been left out of the last...
Yes, Judge, it was the previous community's one, we had reviewed and approved it, it was just mistakenly left out of the list.
Moved in second, discussion. Honorable fairer, please aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item 23 is also an action item, and this is to approve a purchase order exceeding the 25% threshold for incumbent Precinct 3. Ms. Alanis?
Yes, this is just the formality for the court to be aware and, I guess, be in agreement for the expenditures are going to be coming out of that.
Okay, but this one was the 200,000? Moved in second... Move to second to approve, discussion. Okay, this would be item twenty-three and twenty-four, is that correct?
Yes.
Same, same line item?
I don't know.
For both, same second? Okay, I have a motion, a second to approve item twenty-three and twenty-four. Any further discussion? Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item twenty-five is an action item, is to accept, well, I guess, we won't take them each individually. For VTX, I guess VTX sold some...
Their investments.
Their investments and they're refunding their stockholders.
Yes, sir, they're saying they're the stockholders, and I know fifty-four, I think they got four lines for internet and telephone, and they're giving their customers that some of which are dividends.
I think it should be divided by, yeah, no, I don't know, should be divided for all four pre-lives.
I think, I think it should go to general fund.
I should move it.
That it goes to general fund or...
It's just like a one-time payment, it doesn't happen every year. It's just that... And if the court's okay with it...
Yeah, this is really a good thing from VTX One. I know a lot of their customers got a sizable check, so that's good. So it's a motion to approve.
Take it.
Second.
You're gonna do all one, only one, only one, or you're gonna do all way one?
We can do them all together, can't we?
Yes, it's all the same, it's just that it amounts.
Okay, this would be for item twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight.
Your motion for all, aye, I'm making a motion.
Second. Move to second, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item twenty-nine, this is an action item, and this is for, to approve a tax abatement agreement between Gonzola Hill Storage, and this is for battery storage, power storage.
Good morning, Detective Commissioner, we've previously come for you to get your authorization to enter into the agreements. And this is just your final approval?
To have the county enter into the agreements.
Your honor, on this abatement, I think, we have Mr. Guerra sat there, worked for the Stargate Hospital, I think he wanted some information on this abatement. Apparently, Mr. Guerra wanted to have more information on it. All right.
Yes, we're just requesting some clarity, yes.
Approve it, Board of Un... All right, can you please come to the board and...
Yes, sir. Yeah, just, Ms. Guerra was requesting some more information on what the construction actually is gonna be on these projects, just so we could inform the board and for the next meeting, so they have an understanding of what's coming, what they're gonna be requesting.
Yeah, what these are, Mr. Garza, is they're just batteries, storage, to store power. And depending on the size, it depends on the value. And what we have instructed the industrial foundation to do for us is to negotiate the abatements. Now, what we have done is we will abate one hundred percent for the first ten years, but they have to give us a payment in lieu of taxes. The reason for that is that our legislators, in all their wisdom, decided to lower our year-over-year revenues from seven percent to three and a half. Therefore, you know, if all we can do is increase three and a half percent, and we wanna give a three percent raise, that wipes us out. We don't have any more for fuel, for additional cost of insurance, for anything. So this is one way that we could do, so that it doesn't come in as taxes, it comes in as a payment, so we abate one hundred percent. And it's all based on value, depending how much they're going to be investing in the county. It's what the appraisal district negotiates with them as far as that payment in lieu of taxes. And these one, well, the one, the Bombora, they'll be paying us a total of two hundred and sixty thousand a year in lieu of taxes as a pilot program, and it will be broken up into payments, so they pay us, I guess, every six months. And the other one, the Florida, that one, they will pay us also two hundred and sixty thousand... A year, so between both, they will pay us about half a million dollars without it going to our taxes.
Okay, appreciate the information.
All right, but this, do they have to go to the hospital for us to abate it?
Yeah, they did, and we just wanted to better understand information of what we presented to the board, so we have a little bit...
I don't know if the hospital is limited to the three and a half, I know the cities are.
Uh, we're not.
Yeah, I don't think you also, you might wanna negotiate a... Yeah, the only thing is when you negotiate with them, and that's another reason that we decided to go this way, is if anytime they challenge the values at the appraisal district, it lowers ours. So by this, we know that for the next ten years, we'll be getting this.
All right, thank you, appreciate very much. Yes, sir.
Any questions on the abatements? Move to second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr.... Item thirty-one is a donation to the La Rosita Public Library. Move to second, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item thirty-two is also a donation, and this is to precinct four, Food Entry. Move to second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Items thirty-four through...
Is that remaining thirty-three, Judge?
Thirty-two. I'm sorry, thirty-three through forty-four are budget amendments, Ms. Alanis. Move to second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item forty-five, well, forty-five and forty-six are budget corrections, Ms. Alanis. Move to second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye. Opposed. Motion carries. It is now ten thirty-eight, and pursuant to section five-five-one point oh seven-four and five-five-one point oh eight-seven, we are going to execute a session to discuss order of salaries and proposed deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We'll be back for nine, and we're back in open session. Two items in executive session. One is the order of salaries.
Motion to approve, yeah?
Say it. Motion to approve, a second, as presented. Honorable fair, please, aye. Opposed. Motion carries. And the other one, there was only discussion, no action needed. Is there a motion to adjourn? Oh, yeah, before we adjourn, let me, let me go back to the... Item nine, and this is on the tipping fees. If we could amend the motion to include the beginning date or effective date being December first?
On the amend?
On the amend.
I second.
Move to second, Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn? Move to second, Honorable fair, please, aye. Motion carries.